Let's now cross over to the Holy Spirit Cathedral, where the board of the National Cathedral is updating the public on the project.
Sorry, Justice Sophia Crophy, who was retired archbishop, but also was the head of the West African Division of the Anglican Communion in West Africa. So these are the... And then I am Paul Pukumens and Executive Director. We have some of our staff. We have the Director of Administration and Finance, Pastor Darkun Nicholas Darkun, who used to be the head of finance and admin at the Church of Pentecost. We have Mr. Gill, who is our accountant, chief accountant. We have Reverend Thomas Amiao, Church Relations. We have the Director of Operations, Ninette Boachin. So once again, thank you very much for coming. Others are not here, so those who come will introduce them as they come in.
All right, I've just returned from the city of Pentecost. I was nominated by the Pentecostal World Fellowship to represent the Fellowship at the 16th Ordinary General Assembly of the Synods of Bishops of the Catholic Church. And it was a one-month synodical experience. So you spent roughly one month there, and I liked the methodology. It was a sort of round table method that was used. Twelve people on a table. And then before any model, the authorities would like about two theologians to present papers, then three practitioners also to give some sort of testimonies. Then after that, the tables will begin to work. Now, on the table, one is the facilitator selected by the leadership to facilitate the table conference. And then a secretary also will be chosen or given to the table. But then the table is given the freedom to appoint their own rapporteur, who in a way became the leader of the group. Now, a document had already been collected from local level, parishes to dioceses, from dioceses to national level, to regional level like West Africa, and then to continental. Then after the continental, all the documents were compiled into a book. Then out of that book, a working document was prepared. From the working document, a model would be expected to be treated within five days. Now, you have to read the document and then make your presentation within three minutes. So each one of us wants to speak. Now, you cannot speak more than four minutes. So that did not give the extroverts the opportunity of overshadowing the introverts. Because I've observed that in meetings, extroverts often impose themselves. And if even the extrovert has spoken for about one hour, thirty minutes, and you want him to stop, he thinks, he or she thinks that you have not given him enough opportunity to speak. But here, equal time was given to everybody. And then you were obliged to present yours, then another person to present his or hers. Then after that, you were to tell us what you heard from your neighbor. And then after telling what you heard from your neighbor for not more than three minutes, then each one of us too was to speak about what you think is the consensus. What have we agreed? What converged? And then the tension or matters of concern or those that we couldn't agree. So you were not to fight with one another, but then to find out your point of convergences and other areas that you do not agree. And I thought it was very humbling on us and a sign of humility on the point of the Catholic Church to be able to invite fraternal delegates to sit in their meetings and pour their hearts, both their weaknesses and strength, in the presence of protestors. Some people who were supposed to have protested against what you are doing, but having the humility of bringing them on table and listening to them. I think it's a practice that we need to learn. I've come to realize that in within countries and societies, institutions and churches, sometimes if you are not careful, people who are supposed to love one another begin to fight one another. And when we fight one another, we don't succeed. So in a country like Ghana, roughly thirty-two million people, if we don't have the ability of listening to one another, hearing from one another, allowing one another to speak for rest to find our point of convergences and then matters of concern and deal with them, we keep on divoring one another. And if you do that, you cannot develop. And therefore, when the director sent me a copy of your letter and told me that you want an update of the National Cathedral, I thought it was very prudent and appropriate because you want to hear from us what is going on. You've heard many things going on. What is happening? Can we come and listen to it? Thank you very much. And because of your request, I will allow the Director to give us an update of the project so that after that, you can also ask any questions that you want to ask. Thank you very much.
All right, so an extrovert, you don't expect him to take too much advantage and speak over one and a half hours, no? Good morning, once again. And I think, thank you Chairman. I think he's really set the stage for the tone of this update. This really is not about fighting, it's not a shouting battle. It's really about an update on what we believe is a critical national project. And once again, I also want to reiterate his appreciation, Chairman's appreciation, to our political parties outside Parliament. In a sense, I thought this was initially, when I got the letter, I thought this was long overdue. But on the other hand, I also felt this was perfect timing. Because last week, I remember I heard the notion of a Cairo movement twice applied to the National Cathedral project. The concept of a Cairo movement is almost biblical, but it really speaks to perfect timing. And from the biblical perspective, it really talks about this notion of in the fullness of time. So from our end, although at one level, you are the last ones coming to ask for this, we believe the timing is perfect and it comes at the time when it is actually needed very most. And as you know, as a country, we've had four democratic experiments, or republics, as we call them in our country, since independence in nineteen fifty-seven. The current experiment, the Fourth Republic, which started in January nineteen ninety-three, has lasted the longest. And because of this, it has allowed us to witness firsthand some of the challenges of this stability in our democratic journey. And one of the key challenges has to do with the structure of our politics around two axes, our political parties. On the one hand, this structure along two relatively stable political parties have all geared well for continuity, consolidation and political accountability as we have been able to create what democratic theorists refer to as substantive uncertainty. In fact, Ghana is one of the few countries that has been able to achieve that, where at any given election, there can be a change, a stable change in government. On the other hand, having only two political parties locked in this winner takes all frame almost prevents a rational debate on anything as there is a constant edge to bastardize, trivialize and sensationalize issues. And it's not just Ghana. Anywhere you have, look at what is happening in the US. Anywhere you have only two political parties, this is what you get. In this political contest, where the two major political parties in Parliament are engaged in an almost zero-sum existential battle for supremacy and dominance, the political parties outside Parliament could actually provide the sanitizing, mediating influence that we saw badly and urgently need in our politics. So first, as a Ghanaian, I want to thank you for remaining active and relevant, even though at the moment you have no representation in Parliament. Given that winner takes all structure of our politics, I can only imagine that it's a tough existence for the political parties outside Parliament. But we thank you for the consistency with which you've remained active and relevant in our politics. We need that mediating influence that you provide. I spent almost two decades of my professional life in Norway and Denmark, whereby the structure of your politics, you cannot form a government without going into coalition for the parties. So that makes the politics a bit more civil and certainly a far cry from the bickering that characterizes our national conversations. The national conversation on the National Cathedral has suffered this fate of being buffeted along the two axes with the objective of sensationalizing and bastardizing the project for political goals. So first, as a Ghanaian who wants to see some sanity in our politics and a more rational national conversation on the National Cathedral, we welcome this opportunity to meet with the leadership of the PPOP. I hope that this is just the beginning of a set of conversations that will lead to a more rational understanding of the National Cathedral project. We also welcome your framing seek in developmental terms. I was very happy to read the letter. It was really not accused, and he just wanted to understand the developmental impact of this project. So we thank you for that framing, which almost moves it away from the adversarial conversations and framing that has characterized discussions on the national project. This is how we have developed the National Cathedral project, but this has somehow been lost in the adversarial, ruckus politicized debates. In other words, we believe that the political parties outside Parliament could be the vehicle that begins to rationally express and aggregate the diverse potentials of the National Cathedral to our citizens. At this stage, I was actually going to show an image. I think we lost, we kind of didn't understand the setup. What we have done though is that we have USB with... So we will give all of you, in fact, it's, we'll give all of you the images we're going to show. It was the image about the National Cathedral, the element. I'll be doing my best to explain. But as you have said, all of you will receive USB cards with all these images. And as I said, we are hoping that this is just the beginning of a set of conversations. So we'll be providing you with additional information as we go along in this conversation. So once again, thank you. So understanding, so let me begin with my update. I think we have to do it without it. Then I can, yes, okay, so I can use the, we can go through the images. So you have to... Yeah, so who there, yeah, who can go through the images quickly? Who explained, who explained the elements? Okay, so we can do that. So please, let's go on. Okay, please, let's go on. So this session is understanding the National Cathedral, of course. And it says show the image of the elements of the vision, which we can... This was what we're going to show. I asked them to put copies on all of the tables. Eugene, the understanding of National Cathedral, I asked that it be put... So at least you understand the elements we're going to talk about. Right, so show it around. My task then is really, as I indicated, very simple, and to provide an update on the National Cathedral project, where it stands now. But given that this is the first time we are meeting with the political parties outside Parliament, I want to start from the beginning and work my way from there. The presentation will therefore be structured around the following set of issues. One, the vision of the president and the leadership that is the board set up to manage and oversee the vision. Two, implementation, in particular, the developmental rationale and vision of the framework for implementing the project. Three, status of the design and conceptual work. Four, the status of the construction. Five, accountability and fundraising. And then six, the future of the National Cathedral project. These are the issues around which I'll be framing my updates. And these are the issues that we believe are key to understanding the National Cathedral project, where we are in the project and what will be needed to complete it. So what is the National Cathedral project? To recap, on March sixth, twenty seventeen, the sixtieth anniversary of our country's independence, the president in his first independence day address made a surprise historic announcement, and I quote, "I'm happy to announce that on my way to these grounds," that is the Independence Square, "I stopped to perform a very important duty. I have this morning cut the sword for the commencement of the building of a National Cathedral of interdenominational worship in our capital Accra, which is supported by many of our leading figures of faith. It is meant to be a gesture of thanksgiving to the Almighty for the blessings he showered and continues to shower on our nation," unquote. This was the first official announcement that kicked off the implementation of the project, that is, the National Cathedral of Ghana. It was, as I indicated, part of the sixth year legacy project from our sixtieth anniversary celebrations and was supposed to provide a missing link in the nation's architecture by providing a formal space for the religious activities of the state. The National Cathedral provides, therefore, an interdenominational space for worship and will serve to insert God at the center of our nation-building efforts. It will serve as a fulcrum for unifying the Christian community and serve as a tribute to religious liberty in the country. But more importantly, it will also serve as the nation's collective thanksgiving to the Almighty for the blessings he bestowed on the country. I would have shown kind of the web address, www.nationalcathedral.ghana.org, where all this history can be found. So www.nationalcathedral.ghana.org. All the history, all these elements also can also be found. The essence of the National Cathedral of Ghana is aptly captured by the Catholic Archbishop Emeritus of the Kumasi Archdiocese, Most Reverend Dr. Kozisapon, who argues that, and I quote, "A National Cathedral unifies and invites the whole nation as one family of God." "In a National Cathedral, the bishop is God himself, stretching his fatherly hand over the nation and its inhabitants and guests," unquote. Implementation rational. A week after the formal announcement and sword cutting, that is on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, twenty seventeen, sorry, the president inaugurated a board of trustees made up of leading clergy in the country to oversee the project. An executive director to manage the secretariat was also appointed in November twenty seventeen. So since this official announcement on March sixth, twenty seventeen, and the appointment or the inauguration of the board at the time, the board of trustees and the secretariat, significant progress has been made to the level where all the foundational work has been completed. Although the National Cathedral was envisaged as a sacred infrastructure for Ghana, we have integrated elements to make it relevant to the developmental aspirations of the country and also made it relevant to the African and global church. First, the design. Described as an architectural expression of Christianity, captures the moment when Christianity has become a significant force on Africa's institutional landscape and is the continent with the largest number of Christians. The design is a path-breaking work of iconic Ghanaian British architect, Sir David Ajayi, who designed the National Museum of African-American History and Culture in Washington, DC. His current major work, The Abrahamic Family House in United Arab Emirates, was opened in February twenty-three. Building on this design, the National Cathedral has been developed as a home for African Christianity and has an auditorium space of five thousand, expandable to fifteen thousand on key national events. It has chapels, prayer rooms, and provides the missing infrastructure for the solemn national occasions like state funerals, presidential inaugural services, national thanksgiving services and others. As an infrastructure, it also provides a platform for Christian unity for over the seventy percent of Ghana's population who are Christians, thereby fostering national cohesion, as the Supreme Court of Ghana argued in its twenty-third January twenty-nineteen seminal ruling on the project. The National Cathedral, after symbolic architectural expression and celebration of the historically empowering growth of Christianity on African continent, responds to a major concern with the lack of acknowledgement of this dramatic growth of Christianity on the African continent. As a recent twenty-twenty-two book on African Christianity titled Africa to the Rest Argues, and I quote, "Africa is the most Christian continent in the world today. In the year twenty-eighteen, for the first time in history, there were more Christians in Africa than in any other continent in the entire world. The continent now has well over six hundred and seventy million Christ followers. It gets even more impressive. By twenty-fifty, there will likely be more Christians in Africa, that is, one point two five billion, than in the current second and third place contenders, Latin America, seven zero five million, and Europe, four ninety million respectively combined. Yet, since the publishing of this joyous fact, we have traversed nearly every continent, including several countries within Africa itself, and have not found this momentous occasion in world history acknowledged much, let alone profusely celebrated to our satisfaction," unquote. The National Cathedral of Ghana offers the much-deserved architectural celebration of this historic breakthrough in Africa. But it does more than just celebrate this shift in the center of gravity of Christianity to the African continent. In addition, and perhaps more important, it seeks to create an African Christian metropolis to institutionalize this epochal event. The notion of an African Christian metropolis was first introduced by one of the intellectual fathers of our country, Dr. J. B. Dankwa, and speaks the issue of Christian permanence on the African continent. In other words, the National Cathedral project not only celebrates this historic event, but in addition, it provides the infrastructure, including the research, to promote Christian permanence on the continent and turn Ghana into an important religious site for religious pilgrimage and international tourism. And I was going to show an example of how religious tourism is now becoming a critical and important factor in national transformation, using the example of the Zayed Grand Mosque in Abu Dhabi, which was opened in two thousand and seven. Before that, Abu Dhabi was not known for any religious tourism. It's really Mecca. And now, following the completion of that infrastructure, which cost about six hundred and fifty-five million dollars, Abu Dhabi or the Grand Mosque has become the second most visited religious site in the Middle East after Mecca. Last year, it had six million visitors. In other words, the issue of religion and pilgrimage, religious infrastructure has become such a key part in countries' strategies to attract tourists. And that's what we plan to do with the National Cathedral of Ghana. And this is particularly promoted. This strategy to turn Ghana into a religious hub is particularly promoted by the second key initiative we've integrated into the project, dubbed the Bible Museum of Africa. Covering over hundred and fifty thousand square feet of exhibition space and whose development is coordinated by the founding president of the Museum of the Bible in Washington, DC, it will be the largest Bible museum in the world with a thematic focus on one, the role of Africa and Africans in the Bible, and two, the history and contemporary place of the church in Africa and African diaspora. Among others, it will house all Bibles translated into African languages, tell the story of the church in Africa and African diaspora, and provide a convenient platform for occasions or discussions on the role of faith in Africa's transformation. Once again, I was going to show the webpage, www.biblemuseumafrika.org, where you will see the concept and order development. Everything is developed, it's really, we are at a stage where we can just bring in once the building is ready. It is once again, www.biblemuseumafrika.org. All these things are there, the concept, the design and where it is. We wanted to make sure that Ghanaians understand where this project is. It's not just at the level of conversations, it's not just at the level of ideas and concepts. It's really the designs are all ready, a hundred percent completed. Third, the project has integrated the biblical gardens of Africa, covering a space of about ten thousand square feet. It will include the trees, shrubs and flowers of the Bible and serve as a major resource for Christians all over the African continent. Once again, www.biblemuseumafrika.org includes the biblical gardens of Africa, all the concepts, the images, the concept development, everything is there. Everything is available to the public. The development of the Bible Museum of Africa and the biblical gardens of Africa is undertaken by a world-class team of firms, including, one, the Himalaya Group, two, the PRD Group, three, Cubic Mulberry, four, Cortina Productions, five, Jonathan Martin Creative Incorporated. The private portfolios of these companies include key international landmarks, such as National Museum of African-American History and Culture, the Museum of the Bible in Washington, DC, the Creation Museum, the Ark Encounter, the Nazareth First Century Village in Nazareth, Israel, the nine eleven Pentagon Memorial Center, Paro Museum of Natural Nature and Science, George W. Bush Presidential Library and Museum, Royal Alberta Museum in Edmonton, Canada, the Muhammad Ali Center, the Empire State Building Project, International Spy Museum, the Statue of Liberty Museum, Art Gallery of Ontario, the Canadian Museum for Human Rights Winnipeg, and others. In other words, and then the Museum of World Religions in Taiwan. Once again, we wanted to, what we have done is really to say that if we're going to spend this kind of money, this should be done at a level where we attract the world. And that means really going for those who are the leading edge of these things, who've developed the leading museums in the world. Those are, these are the teams we've assembled, they've been here, they've done all the work. You go to, once again, www.biblemuseumafrika.org, you see their portfolios, you see all the work they have done. Fourth, the cathedral and museum would also serve as a convening platform for national African and global conversations on the role of faith and national transformation. The most recent conversation, in other words, we've actually begun this convening platform of the National Cathedral, the most recent conversation was a Pan-African symposium held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, barely a month ago, at the University of Ghana titled, "Is Christianity the White Man's Religion, the Bible and the Making and Remaking of the African Diaspora?" This was organized in partnership with the Urban Renewal Center in Virginia, USA, and Alliance of Black Pentecostal Scholarship. The aim is to develop this into a Pan-African platform on the Bible and African diaspora. The partnership is currently planning to develop a proposal for a three-to-five-year symposium series to be titled, "The Bible and the African Diaspora." The aim is to provide a platform for linking Africa and the diaspora that is mediated by faith. It is conceived as the National Cathedral's response and contribution to the Beyond the Year of Return Initiative. In other words, we want the National Cathedral to provide the link to bring in the African diaspora to Ghana. One of the areas in which we've not tapped into is the issue of religion. We've used other cultural things, economic, to bring in the diaspora. But wherever the African diaspora is, what defines the African diaspora is the spirituality. And we want the National Cathedral to provide that mediating link that brings diasporans here to celebrate their Christian roots. Fifth, we've integrated an economic engine into the National Cathedral project that is made up of ten revenue sources established to ensure the economic viability of the project. In other words, the National Cathedral of Ghana, the Biblical Gardens of Africa and the Bible Museum of Africa referred to as the complex, when combined, will generate resources from the following ten revenue streams. One, admissions to the museum, to the gardens, cathedral. Are we going to have memberships? Most museums would have memberships. In fact, most cathedrals, the great cathedrals, have members, memberships. Almost all the great cathedrals, Notre Dame, Washington National Cathedral, all would have members. So we have a membership that also allows us to raise income. We have integrated a three-hundred-and-fifty-seater restaurant. It was not part of the original design, but we felt that this cathedral should not go the way of all national monuments. We should integrate the elements that makes it economic viable. So we've integrated a three-sixty, three-fifty-seater. We have a cafe, in addition to the restaurant, it's a cafe. We have catering, world-class catering kitchen to cater to events. We would have a gift shop, both for the museum and the cathedral shop. We have meeting space rentals. These were integrated particularly for the economic aspects of the project. One, we've included a thousand-plus banquet hall. We have over nearly two hundred-seater conference center for small conferences. We have two chapels, we have prayer rooms, we have music spaces where choirs can rent. We have boardrooms, and we are developing this really to world-class because of their location. because of the location, the site, that we really want this to be a site, the chairman just came from Vatican, we really want to develop it into the standard where the Pope would be happy to host some of his meetings, and we're not saying this to bluff. In fact, the people who are developing it, the Bible Museum of, in Washington DC, have developed it to that standard. In fact, almost all the ambassadors, even the president has his meetings in the Bible Museum of Washington, the conference center, the banquet halls, and so that is the concept that we've integrated into the National Cathedral. We also have special events, concerts, we have a 5,000-seater space in the center of Accra, expandable, so we have, Hamunus Coran and others could have their concert competitions here, we, concerts that will be brought to a global event, that will all be, we are hoping to attract them. In fact, part of the people we've putting together, helping to develop as people who are actually have been able to develop infrastructure that attracts tourists. So that's what we are trying to do. We also have online metandis, and then we have online education. Part of the discussions we have at the moment is really to see what can the National Cathedral do in terms of African Christianity. This is a new phenomenon, and we have experts in this country who can help us develop costs that can be sold to the rest of the world. Ultimately, these revenue streams ensure that this national monument does not go the way of all our national monuments, but has the resources for programming and maintenance. So this initiative, the path-breaking design, the Bible Museum of Africa, the Biblical Gardens of Africa, and the convenient platform and economic engine help to ensure the relevance of the project to the country, to the church in our country, to the church in Africa, to the African diaspora and beyond. Ultimately, ultimately, the project is conceived as Ghana's gift to the global Christian community worldwide with the objective of transforming Ghana into an African-Christian hub. Ultimately, the goal is to turn Ghana into one of the leading sites for religious tourism on the African continent. Once again, if you want to understand the progress we've made for the National Cathedral, please go to www.nationalcathedralghana.org. And for the Bible Museum and Biblical Gardens, please go to www.biblemuseumafrika.org. All what I've said is there. Second, as we speak, we've just received our first major gift for the museum and gardens. These are life-size statues based on biblical themes and figures donated to us by a US firm, ABBA Anointing, or the largest search company in the world. The statues just arrived at the thermal port, and we are working to get them out. We are also in talks with the Israeli Antiquities Authority for artifacts, and will soon engage others to ensure that we secure artifacts that help to make this into a major world-class attraction. I want to stress that, I mean, there's been issues of that the project has been suspended. It hasn't. The construction has stalled, but the National Cathedral is almost an institution, it's going to be one of the largest institutions. So the work continues on a daily basis. In addition to fundraising, we are already engaging those who can actually give us artifacts. Because if you want to turn this into a world-class site, you need historical artifacts, and those you can buy. Most museums actually don't buy these things. And so you negotiate, some will give it to you as gifts or as permanent exhibitions. Those processes are ongoing on a daily basis, and that's why I'm saying I'm happy to report that in fact, our first set of statues, religious statues for the museum and the gardens has just been shipped to us from the ABBA Anointing Company in Houston, Texas. And when we take them from the harbor, we will also bring the media to see. In addition, all what I've said, the design, the reports of the design work of the cathedral, the Bible Museum, and the Biblical Gardens have also been submitted to Parliament. These are not, we're not just saying this and keeping this to ourselves, they have been submitted and are with Parliament. Construction of the National Cathedral, an update. Following the completion of the preparatory design phase, an international procurement process ultimately led to the selection of a joint venture led by the Italian firm Rizani di Eca, whose project portfolio includes the Zayed Grand Mosque in Abu Dhabi and two of the leading construction firms in Ghana, Messers Barbissoti and Sons and Disimoni. The consortium of these three leading construction firms, namely Rizani di Eca, Barbissoti and Sons, Disimoni, together forms the Ribadi JV. So what we say at the contractor, its name is called Ribadi, is an amalgamation of the three companies, Rizani, Disimoni, and Barbissoti, so Ribadi, Barbissoti, Disimoni. One of the interesting historical things that we didn't know, that when we got the company, we found out that, one, they are the same company, were part of the group that developed the Grand Mosque in Abu Dhabi. We didn't even know that. But the most interesting thing is that it was a joint venture, Empregilio and Rizani. Empregilio was the same company that built Dakozomodam. I mean, so it's a certain historical things coming together. And the operations director for this project, Franco, turns out to be the project manager who developed, built the Grand Mosque in Abu Dhabi. These were not things known to us, but somehow God's infinite wisdom has brought all these things together to help us advance the objective of turning this into this hub for religious pilgrimage. Because these guys have done it, they've done it before. Those of you who've been to the Grand Mosque, I mean, literally, you have to queue for hours to be able to enter. And I've been there, in fact, I went there before this cathedral project started. Ribadi. Construction, as you can see, and that's why we wanted to hold this at the site, has stalled at the moment. But to understand the scale of work that has been done already, it's important to understand the following general details, and we'll send you to the constructions after this, just a quick tour of that. The cathedral includes the following: seven levels, two basement levels and five upper levels, making it the highest civic building in Accra with a height of about 50 meters. And if you compare it to the Parliament of Egypt, 600, that is 45 meters. The cathedral will be 50 meters, so to be the highest civic building in the neighborhood. And as a standalone structure with the bell tower, when it's included, it goes to about 60 meters, so that it will define the skyline of Accra. With an internal area of 86,000 square meters, an external civic room including gardens, drivings and walkways encompassing 36,000 square meters. Works executed at the moment, because you asked for an update, so we're trying to, once again, my presentation is also available in the USB. So it's, even if I rush towards it, you have it, all of you, we've also printed copies for the media, and it's also part of the USB that all of you will be. Works executed on site. The National Cathedral site establishment is completed. We brought you here to see that this is a site office. So all these things are part of the establishment of the National Cathedral project, it's part of the uses to which the money that you receive. So everything you see here, the cranes, the cars, are part of the establishment of the National Cathedral project. And so when there are these conversations that we just took money and dug a hole, these are all part, I mean, the cranes, five cranes, the vehicles, the site office, then furniture, everything in it is part of the... So five cranes were purchased and delivered to the site, three cranes have been installed to date, a concrete batten plant, concrete is at the other side, has been set up in the east gardens, a rebar cut and bending yard has been set up as you, when you came in, offices, staff canteen, wash and toilet blocks, warehouses, storage, laydown areas have all been set up. Further establishment items like management, site staff, security, technical equipment and machinery, generators, tools, have all been provided, and this is all part of the resources. And the design work that we've done, we brought in the leading companies in the world, this is all part of the resources we receive from the state. And we have, as you said, we have all the budgetary accounting that we'd be happy to share it with, it's with Parliament. And about an area of 70,000 square meters has been cleared, about 123 trees within the construction perimeter where have been retained. Existing services, in fact, one of the key things that almost, we talk about the delay in this project, was the relocation of services, the water, electricity, almost all the major ones were on this site, they had to be relocated, and it took considerable amount of time. And what we saw was that the designs that were even given to us did not reflect what was on the ground. What we have done is sanitized that. So as part of the relocation, we've now provided a trench where all the services are now put together. Instead of electricity here, water here, we've actually now sanitized the system for the country through the National Cathedral project. So existing services, electricity, water, sewage and telecommunications have been relocated. About 230,000 square meters have been excavated and removed from the site. All that excavation and sanitation away are part of the resources used. We have 1,400 square meters concrete has been laid so far, 1,900 tons of rebar purchased and delivered to site, 2,000 tons of rebar installed, 10,000 square meters of approved material. And so all these details will be given to you as part of today's... So the idea that somehow we just took funds and dug a hole is simply mischievous and it reflects some of the issues we have to face on a daily basis as a country, the kind of politicized conversations that our country has tended to. Indeed, I want to put it on record that a report of this activity, supported by detailed pictures, has been submitted to Parliament, and we're submitting that to all of you, except political parties outside Parliament, that you also have all the detailed information that we've submitted to Parliament. The next is accountability and fundraising for the National Cathedral. At the moment, I want to begin with the fact that at the moment, there are two ongoing audits of the National Cathedral project that seeks to look into issues of accountability, namely, one, an investigation by Schreit into issues of conflict of interest and procurement, and two, a financial audit by Deloitte. So the notion somehow that we are running away from accountability is simply false. In fact, since January, Schreit has been involved in detailed investigations, we've been cooperating, they've been, but the last information I saw from Schreit was a questionnaire to the contractors about how they came to be selected, and they wanted all the details. So everything is being detailed, there's detailed audit, Deloitte, I mean, extensive information they wanted, the last information they wanted was even anybody who's contributed to the National Cathedral, they wanted details. So to be sure that there's not been any fishy, we've, we say we are committed to ensuring that the process takes the time it needs, so that we will restore the confidence in this project to... So really, that's the idea that somehow a project of this nature would not want to be accountable, it's not, I mean, I can fathom it, I can understand it. So but this, on this note standing, I want to state categorically that there is no criminality in this project. We have implemented the project with integrity, including accounting for all the monies from the state to the National Cathedral project. We've repeated this and repeat it again, there is no criminality in the National Cathedral project, we have implemented this project with integrity and accounted for every penny that we've been giving by the state and donors. And this accounting, once again, has been submitted to Parliament, sometimes it's been misused, but we have submitted everything to Parliament. For purposes of clarity, I wanted to report verbatim a memo on these issues that are submitted to Parliament. I won't read it, it's there, it speaks to the issues of the amount of money we received and how it was all accounted for. We received a total of 339 million, and the amount paid directly to the National Cathedral, 225, and amount paid directly to the consultants, Ajay Associates, 113 million, all of them are specified here and will be made available to all of you. So the two payments that we received from the architect design team and us come to the same amount. So first, there's no missing figure or amount that has not been, we've not been able to account for. A second, and as I indicated, the detailed accounting for these funds were provided to Parliament on December 15th, 2022, by the secretaries. In the case of the accounting from the secretariat, this involved, among others, one, total payments made to the contractor, Ribadi, which was the CD equivalent of 22.5 million advance payment with letter of intent, and then 12.5 million, an advance payment made with the letter of award. So all these figures are in your presentation. And then, secondly, what the detailed accounting also includes is total payments made to the Bible Museum and Biblical Gardens design team, this leading firm who have designed this to ensure that it becomes a world-class attraction, which amounts to 4.2 million. Once again, it's there, as I said, we hope this is the beginning of a set of conversations, so you want qualifications, we're happy to send all those to you. In the case of the consultants, let me stress that this included a list of all the companies in the consultants team, and that's all this idea that somehow we brought in an architect and paid him huge sums of money. No, we don't actually have a contract for an architect, we have a contract for a consultant and a design team, made up of about 12 to 15 companies, majority of Ghanaian companies. So all the engineering work, almost all the companies are Ghanaian companies. For the largest company in this project, actually, the design team, Sasa Fubwachi and Partners, who are some of the leading engineering, coming from the first, they actually did the job 600. I mean, so we've really, this idea that somehow one architect is receiving, no project gave that kind of money to an architect, and we don't have a contract for an architect, we have a contract for a design team with Ajay Associates being the lead consultant. All this information, so selecting the payments to architects, while a project of this nature would always have opposition, we are nonetheless concerned about the representations. For instance, the continuous presentation of the contract to the consultant is worrying, as none of the amounts bundled around count anywhere near the contract amount, rather than 34%. It's often said that we paid 34% of the sum, contract sum to the architects, the contract figure is actually 12.5%, when the Ministry of Work and Housing allows for 16.5%. And the 12.5% will not change irrespective of what happens to the total cost. But more critically, the contract is not for an architect, but for a set of consultants that is involving about 15 international Ghanaian firms, of which David Ajay Associates are lead consultants. State funding of the National Cathedral. One of the controversial issues also is that we said the state was not going to put in any money, and somehow the state is secretly putting in money. One of the current complaints is that the state was not to put in any money in the National Cathedral project. This is not true. As the National Cathedral project was conceived as a partnership between the state and the Ghanaian Christian community, and Ghanaians in general, as part of operationalizing this partnership, the expected role of the state was communicated to Parliament in November 2018. As part of the budget statement read in Parliament on November 15th, 2018, the Minister for Finance indicated that the state's role in the National Cathedral project will be, and I quote, "Providing the land, the secretariat, and seed money for the preparatory phase." Subsequent budgets have been used to update Parliament on the development of the project. I have detailed, detailed all the budget statements since 2018, and what we said about the National Cathedral, it includes the page numbers and the paragraphs, including what we said, the money that we said the state will be contributing. Everything is here, and it's, you can, once again, it's makes reference to the specific budget, what is the budget statement itself, or is the budget speech, and the pages, you can make reference to all of that. In the further elaboration, the Attorney General's opinion of General 620 to confirm the National Cathedral as a state-owned rather than a personal project, and so legitimate to receive state funds. All this documentation has been submitted to Parliament, we are happy to present it to the political parties outside Parliament, who, once again, are critical mediating actors for us. In effect, the payments to National Cathedral by the Ministry of Finance are within the framework of the state's role in the project submitted to Parliament in November 2018 and updated every budget year. There have been other things about conflict of interest, payment of someone, I'm not going to go into those details, that Reverend, one of the trustees was said to have been paid 2.6 million recently, we were accused of that, that the cathedral has accused, was accused of illegally transferring 2.6 million to a company called JNS Talents Center Limited. I want to explain once again that the 2.6 million transfer on September to JNS Talents Center Limited was really made as, I don't know if you call it a loan, I mean, it literally says, look, you are in a, and we transferred that money less than two weeks back to the trustee. It was not a loan, he never got an interest in it, it's one of the most, I mean, some of the things about this project that one hopes had not happened. This was a voluntary offer from a member of the board, Reverend Kusibwatin, to help the project meet urgent payments... the project meet urgent payments to the contractors. For the avoidance of doubt, on the advice of the board chairman, this was documented in a letter from the secretariat to the board member on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Similarly, the transfers from JNS on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, the refund to JNS on September eighth, twenty-twenty-one could be traced from our bank statements. All this documentation, well, he just entered, we are talking about him, talk about... So that this amount, the so-called two-point-six million was used to pay the contractors for their mobilization, and hence accounted for under contractors' mobilization in the accounts presented to parliament on December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, a reference as part of the documentation. Consequently, consequently, there is no conflict of interest, as the board member, Reverend Kusibu Watin did not benefit in any way from the transaction, and this is one of the most painful episodes in this project, where somebody's attempt to contribute to a national project is almost demonized, including some, and I'm hoping that as parties outside parliament, I mean, he's a public figure, but to go to the extent of even targeting his wife and children, that should be unacceptable in our democracy. I mean, it's, there's a, there's a level at which we should not dissent, our policies should not dissent. And really, I'm appealing to the parties outside parliament, that yes, we have a vibrant democracy, we want debate, we want accountability, but there has to be a certain level at which we should not dissent. There's a certain recklessness that can tear this country apart, and that for me, the breaking point was when the children and the wife, picture were brought into the... So part of what we are hoping for during these conversations, we do not want to run away from accountability, a project of this nature cannot run away from accountability, but it's unacceptable. I mean, really, to let our conversations, our policy dissent to this level, it's really, it can tear us apart. Appointment of contractors for the National Cathedral. The appointment of the contractor for the National Cathedral Project was done through an extensive international procurement led by the consultant, Sehaj, David Ajay Associates, whose PPA-approved contract included the selection of a contractor for the approval of the board. So once again, there's this whole idea that we never went to PPA, I mean, the documentation is there, the PPA approved the consultants, and part of the consultant's job was to help the board select a contractor. In addition, the board officially commissioned a technical committee made up of seasoned Ghanaian professionals in the building and construction industry. This technical group included one, a senior architect and project manager, Mr. Tony Yabouasari, who heads the KJTR project, so, and headed the construction of the court offices, so this is a season, Mr. Kwame Prempe, who's the deputy CEO of the PPA, senior architect, Mrs. Becky Yakpo, who literally kind of designed almost all the regi-manual, and was a project manager for that project. I mean, so these are seasoned, they are not your, they are professionals. Senior quantity surveyor, Dr. Joseph Buate, who was seconded to the project by the Church of Pentecost, I mean, all the, if there's a church in Ghana that has done construction, it's a Pentecost church, it's done more than any other church in our country. And the Qs, the quantity surveyor in charge of that, was seconded to us and is part of the procurement team of this project. We also had Mr. George Lomote, who was chief procurement and supply chain manager of the president, and for international, to be sure that, look, these were international construction firms, we wanted to be sure that we, the figures they presented were, could be checked comparatively. So we brought in, the board appointed, Mr. Karis Ahmed, the founding president, the Museum of the Bible, who's done more almost, more of all the religious impact in the world has been done by him, major construction work, so that he could bring us the comparative insights into the discussions. This technical committee reviewed all the proposals by the lead consultants before recommending this for approval to the board. The board did not have to seek the approval of the PPA in respect of the actual construction of the National Cathedral. This was because as part of the scope of services, the consultant was to be responsible for the procurement process. The PPA granted approval of this request on seventeenth of December, twenty-eighteen, and it formed the basis for the engagement of a contractor for this project. Once again, the documentation is there for your perusal, we can send them to you. For the avoidance of doubt, this is reproducing the project management section of the scope of service submitted to PPA as, and I quote, "Manage the procurement process and recommend contractors for approval by the client." So in other words, this was part of the role of the consultant, that was approved by the PPA in December, twenty-eighteen. The part of the role of the lead consultant was, and I quote, "Wants to manage the procurement process and recommend contractors for approval by the client." Thus, once the engagement of the contractor was part of the scope of services by the consultant, there was no requirement for the project to request an approval, especially when the method for the selection of the contractor was through a competitive process, which is being reviewed by SRI, I think one of the most competitive processes that we make available to all of you. I don't think there's been any such competitive process, to the best of my knowledge. Similarly, in the opinion of the Attorney General, the National Cathedral of Ghana being a company limited by guarantees, not a company formed with shares, or in respect of who context, some will prefer to leave the trusteeship or the board. To give you just one scenario, fundraising. There are four opinions on this, namely, let the state fund it, let no state funding to, free loan, no loan, only fundraising. And all these are entrenched positions with their proponents threatening to resign if their positions are not adopted. So there's one group who says, look, the church has done enough for this country, the state should build this project with state funds. And there are board members who argue that way, that the church has contributed enough before independence and after independence, so the state should build this. And there are others who are saying, absolutely not, the state should not have its hand in this at all. If the state provides more money, they are going to resign. I mean, I'm talking about the same board with the different opinions. And then there's one who says, look, there's absolutely no way you can raise money to build this, we go for a loan, and then later we repay it. Some will say, India, one god called them for to ministry, he told them never to take loans, and so if this project takes loans, they are going to resign. In other words, the board is also made up of this really strong individuals who build empire, they're almost empire builders, but they have their own strategies, and so that affects, once again, it is part of the church landscape. And I was explaining to the Christian Council leadership that it's one of the things that a church in Ghana has to deal with, how to create a platform for collective action on this leaders who, he had to have only implemented their own programs. On another level, there are details I don't want to get into, however, what is happening within the board is a reflection of the difficulties of building a cohesive platform for collective action by the church in Ghana. And this is an issue the leadership of the church in Ghana would have to help to resolve. This notwithstanding, we are grateful that all the board, the trustees, the board, including those who have voluntarily left the board, still remain committed to the vision of the National Cathedral and want to see it completed to God's glory. Finally, the way forward, the future of the National Cathedral Project. The way forward for the project involves three strategies, namely, one, diffusing the controversial issues through an audit or audits, two, revamped strategy of funding and fundraising, and three, changing the national conversations and narrative on the project, which is what I believe we are trying to do today. As I said, on accountability and audits, already, there are two audits ongoing, and we have indicated that we've submitted all the documentation to parliament, if parliament so desires, they can ask for a national audit, parliamentary hearing, and we are open to that, we've called for that, and so we... So in other words, part of what we believe will restore the confidence of this project is these audits, because this has become such a toxic conversation that you need to almost adopt a critical distance and have these audits, and really get Ghanaians to... As I said, two of the audits are currently underway, and we hope parliament will also agree to do whatever they want to do on this. Fundraising, we have to, we believe that the state has, particularly given the economic context, conditions, has given enough for this project. It allowed us to do the foundational work to really put together a world-class team to design this. No one church could have been able to get the architect we had for this project. No one church in this country could have brought in the world-class museum developing firm that we've been able to do. It's only the capacity of the state that has allowed us to do that, and we believe that the state should not put in more money. This is our time to mobilize resources from the private sector, from Ghanaians, and part of that is the strategy I've mentioned here. But finally, it's changing the national conversation on the National Cathedral, in addition to the fundraising outside the state. That's the second one. The first is the audit, in terms of the future, the audit, to establish accountability. The second is the issues of fundraising that we believe is our responsibility, and we are involved on a daily basis, I mean, to really ensure that we raise the funds for this, to continue this project. And thirdly, and finally, it's changing the national conversation on this project. There is an urgent need to have rational conversations on this project. This has been difficult because of the deep mistrust in our politics and the denominationalism in the church. We urgently need a kind of discussions as the political parties outside parliament is seeking to generate. We are not asking for discussions that blindly support this project. What we are asking for is what Reverend Professor Kabenasamwede do call for on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and what the chairman of the Christian Council of Ghana, right Reverend, Dr. Hilya Dogwe, has also called for. That is a de-politicized national conversation that also focuses on the contributions of the National Cathedral Project to the country's transformation. This is the kind of de-politicized, detached, rational conversation that we hope the political parties outside parliament would also help us generate. Conclusion. The National Cathedral of Ghana complex, that is the cathedral, the museum, the biblical gardens, is a major addition to Ghana's nation-building infrastructure. Its design features and programming are aimed at integrating our spirituality into our development. Its development brings together the best expertise in the world, with the best in Ghana, with the objective of producing a world-class experience that contributes significantly to the country's transformation. The National Cathedral is therefore a major investment, rather than a vanity project that is going to saddle the country with debt. And we've done the economic impact analysis, how much is going to come in within the next five years, all of them are, the documentation is there, it's with parliament, we're willing to share it with the PPOP, the parties outside parliament. So once again, the National Cathedral is therefore a major investment, rather than a vanity project that is going to saddle the country with debt. The National Cathedral of Ghana and the Bible Museum of Africa are very ambitious but needed projects. Significant foundational work funded by the state has been completed. We look forward to the political parties outside parliament joining us to work towards the completion of this historic and game-changing infrastructure. Thank you once again for calling this, for this update on the National Cathedral Project, and God bless us all. Thank you once again.